The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel.
We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license.
We also have a special dog license. It's a special heart, medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured or needs extreme medical care.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. As always announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
You want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners. I believe Betty has our dog today. The dog from the movie Mask. Elizabeth didn't give me a dog biscuit this morning. Oh, here we go. We just want to inspect the place a little bit. Good morning. This week's featured pet at the Lorain County Dog Kennel is a stray male, oh, a Jack Russell mix, about two years old. He is in cage 30 and is eligible for adoption. Look. He's eligible for adoption on Friday, February 3rd. Now, look what a nice pet he'd take. I bet a good walking buddy, too. Yeah. Can you bark? Woof! He says, "Who is this crazy woman?" Good puppy. Oh, yes. Oh, you're gonna shake?
They jump good. High jumpers.
I know. Elizabeth didn't give me a treat this morning. No treat. Okay? So, please stop by our dog kennel. We have several dogs available for adoption, looking for a good home. And our batting record is, Jack, 1,000. Thank you very much. I gotta give this microphone back to Cordez. Okay, for our quote for the day, it's kind of a funny one. Don't toss away the aluminum foil on your TV dinner. You may be throwing away the best part. Okay, Teresa.
First thing, we have an annexation. It's the decision on the 226.13 acres from Carlisle Township to the City of Illyria. Attorney James Taylor is the agent.
Well, we've been discussing this annexation for quite some time, and I know the City of Illyria and the townships have been in negotiations and trying to talk this out. Do we have an update on that?
Yes, Commissioner. We have, I believe, made some substantial progress. There's still a ways to go and it has not been concluded. It is my understanding that the township and the city are willing to extend the time. And I think if Mr. Taylor is the developers, or your clients...
Right, we've agreed to just one last 30-day extension. We have three meetings scheduled. We're ready to give them the best of the best. We can reschedule approximately 45 minutes now.
So I can make a motion to extend this for 30 days?
Again, what, because I don't think we caught that on the record, is the petitioners are willing to go for about a 30-day extension, but this is absolutely the last one. And if it's not wrapped up by then...
So you better get it together, basically, huh? I would make that motion.
Do we all want to have a time?
March 2nd, which would be the 27th day, because 30th would be actually Saturday. So if that's okay with all parties? March 2nd.
Mr. Schrader's not here today, but I've talked to him on the phone. He's agreed that that was fine with him. And Mr. White is going to be able to concur for the township.
Do I have a second? Yes, did you want to stipulate a time, or you don't care?
We can do it first thing, 9:30.
Okay, fine. I'll second.
March 2nd?
March 2nd, 9:30.
Thank you.
So we have a 30-days...
Actually, 27.
Jim, can you give us an update on those negotiations? I've been, you've been quite involved with that.
Would you like to take a roll call first on this motion, though? No. No? I want to hear first. Okay.
The, it's, thank you for the opportunity. I think that right before, excuse me, shortly after the holidays, we heard that there didn't seem to be, there was a feeling that there wasn't the ability to come together on a jet by one of the parties. And that was a little bit difficult, because we were still having discussions. And we have intensified our meetings since then. And I'm pleased to tell the board that we are very, very close to, I believe, reaching an agreement that the parties, both parties, may find acceptable. Greatly encouraged. There's been a lot of movement, a lot of original thinking on how to bring this jet together. We're out of the mainstream, and we're into some new areas that may set a trend for future jets on how to share and distribute funds and sharing the resources. And I've seen a spirit decor and cooperation in the last few meetings that we didn't have before. And the parties are working very, very well together. And I'm thinking that they're, I know they're going to get an agreement. I'm just, don't know. The 30 days is pretty short, but that just gives us a more challenging goal to meet. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring you back something that everybody finds agreeable within that timeframe. My hat's off to Carlisle Township and the City of Illyria for making the progress they have. I think that three months ago, you probably, nobody would have taken a bet that they were ever going to be able to come together and reach an agreement. So significant progress being made. And the petitioners, I'm sorry, I apologize, for their patience and allowing us to continue with this process, because obviously, without their patience, we may not have had the same cooperative attitude at the table.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to say, especially the petitioners, I want to thank you for waiting this process out, because I think it portends a lot of good things for Lorain County in general. And I want to publicly thank Mr. Cordez for his leadership in bringing these parties together. I think this is the better way for us to go. And so I want to publicly thank you also for allowing us to go through this process. And Jerry Innis. I'm sorry. And while we're thanking everybody, Jerry's been doing this for so long that we just take him for granted, and I apologize for that.
Now you can take your vote.
Take your role.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Under resolutions number one...
Mr. Albert would like to say something.
Oh, come on up, Mr. Albert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larnie Albert, 155 Albert Drive, Grafton. Just wanted to put a little bit of light on this situation here, being it's historically the longest wait for an annexation in Lorain County history. I started this six years ago, when Mike Keys was still mayor, and Bill Grace is going into his sixth year as mayor. Purchased this land to develop at a highlight time when building industry was booming. Came in for annexation. The, Mrs. Blair was the only one left out of the three commissioners at the time. This thing was set aside for 90 days, along with a couple other annexations. I went along with that. I withdrew it, trying to work something out with the trustees and with the City of Illyria to get sewers. It's been ongoing. And some time has passed, and things have kind of floated away. You talk to somebody today, and tomorrow, they forget you talked to them. A year ago, we came in for this annexation again. We've been here, I don't know how many times. We've given extension after extension after extension. It's time to act. We're going to go along with this 30-day situation, but we're not going to extend any further. If it takes other means to get this thing done, we're going to have to do that. But we can't wait no longer. I'm no kid no more. Mr. Shave's no kid no more. And we'd like to see this before we die. So I want to thank you for your time. Just wanted to refresh your memory as to how long we've been waiting for this thing, how patient we've been. And in 30 days, if these guys don't cut her, we're going to be back here, and there's not going to be any extensions, okay? Thank you for your time.
You're still a kid, Larnie.
That's all for you.
Job and Family Services, Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. A second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Aye. A second, I'm sorry. I'll vote aye after I second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
I have a question. I see Phil's in the audience. I tried to get ahold of Judy yesterday regarding one of the requisitions. You guys are having some documents copied. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not sure which one it was. Are they talking about all the records in the basement?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just going to get those scanned.
That was that large one? That program for the, you want to go out for the RFPs and so forth?
No, that's separate.
Okay.
This is just all the stuff. The basement has a bunch of archived books covered up with maintenance equipment, tables, ladders, things like that. It's hard to get at for the customers. So we're just going to take them one at a time and get them scanned.
How technical is that scanning process? Because I toured, um...
It's not, just slotted in.
Is it? Because I toured, um...
The only problem is, you've got to get both sides. So you've got to do double the work. It's a little time-consuming, and we know how many thousands of books are down there, and how old they are, and how delicate the pages are by now. So I believe that's what she's talking about, otherwise. That's the other thing that's on the agenda for the new system is the only thing I was aware of.
I don't think so either. Can I see those? Could you pass them?
Yeah, there's nothing on there. Do you have an under?
No, I had it on my desk, and I don't remember which one it was. Maybe it was under Bill's.
Yeah, what is that? There was something with the recording.
The only reason that I'm asking, Phil, is I went, I had the opportunity to go out to Murray Ridge this week and tour their facility. And one of the things that they're doing now is scanning documents, and it's very confidential. And I just wondered if Judy was aware that they did that there and gave them the opportunity to see if they can take care of this for you.
That's a thought. I was thinking more along the lines of the Record Center and then storing everything over there. But if Murray Ridge is available, I don't want to put any thoughts in anybody's heads, but that's not a bad idea.
Can you have her check into that?
Will do.
To see how high, you know, I mean, it may be more technical than what they can do, but if it's just scanning documents, that's, I think that's something that they can handle.
Sure.
Thank you.
There was, uh, there was something. It's not here. I saw it.
I mean, we're going out for our piece.
Number 16, you bought?
No, we're going out for our piece on the agenda.
It was our piece.
Oh, that's what it was, yes. You're right.
I was, okay.
I knew it was somewhere.
I was trying to get your attention, but I don't know 16.
Okay.
It was the RFPs for the larger project. That's different than...
Exactly. And we do have an extra week on that, because it's not due to advertise until February 10th.
Well, we can speak to more when we get to that.
Okay.
The, we've been working in conjunction with Judy and Phil, with the Record Center. We got a good cooperative effort going on a lot of stuff. Yes. With the records. So we're getting a lot done there, but Phil was being kind about the way the condition of the records are in the basement. We stuck them down there about, I want to say about eight, nine years ago, and the conditions have just deteriorated rapidly. And they've been really struggling trying to get all those records out. It's almost embarrassing when somebody's looking for something. We have to send them down to all the garbage and, yeah, over into the corner. So it's much needed. But the MRDD thing, that may help for us, too, with the Record Center.
Were you aware that they did that now? That's a new thing.
I didn't know they were doing the scanning, but I had the wonderful opportunity to work for an MRDD, and we ran workshops when I was working there. And I know that they do have some of the consumers go out and have job coaches and work in various tasks. I hadn't thought about the scanning of the documents, which could be an exciting partnership for us. And we do have some partnerships with them now for cleaning services and things in some of our buildings out on Middle Ridge. So we can take a look into that.
Okay. Sorry to go off track here a little bit, but...
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary from plays within jurisdiction of Commissioners?
Commissioners, I would like to request an executive session. There's one or two new hires I want to talk to you about. I also want to bring you up to speed on where we are on some personnel litigation. And I don't believe it'll be too long. And I want to talk to you about getting ready for upcoming round of labor negotiations. There's been a filing by the unions to begin the process, and it'll be a new process to Lori, you, and Ted. And I will spend some time talking about that, what we need to do. And those are all permissible subjects under the sunshine law.
Authorize the changing of the filing of Commissioners' meeting dates and times due to other obligations. Instead of Thursday, March 9th, we'll do Tuesday, March 7th at 9:30. Instead of April 13th, we'll go Wednesday, April 12th at 9:30. And also, instead of November 9th, we'll go Wednesday, November 8th at 9:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is all NOAACA's meeting and...
There's two NOAACA meetings.
Okay.
Yes.
I would love to do that. I said, "I would love to have a night meeting." Jim asked the question, "We'd like to have a night meeting." That'd be a great idea, more participation from the public. I still think we ought to take this on the road.
You know, we were very successful and well-received when we did that, but it had come to our attention that we're required to have 50 meetings in the seat. And I'm not even sure that we ever got over the issue of whether any meetings that we hold outside the seat would survive a judicial review. I don't know if Mr. Innis wants to speak to that. It's probably a good piece of information for our friends that routinely visit our meetings, because they've also visited us on the road, too. Jerry, do you?
We still can't hear you, Mr. Cordez.
You know, I think you're better off if you can't hear him. Sorry.
I was particularly interested in the requirement and how that was going to be done.
I'm sorry, I was just being facetious.
Commissioner Blair will recall, and perhaps some of the people in the audience will recall, that two, three years ago, I don't exactly remember when, we held some of our Commissioner meetings in various parts of the areas around the county. Subsequent to that, in some research that I had been doing, I came across some opinions and some court decisions that questioned whether those would count toward our regular meetings and whether we, in fact, can hold regular meetings outside of this building. So because of that, I have suggested to the Commissioners they need to conduct the requisite number of meetings.
50?
Yes.
50.
50, to be safe here in this building. I've not found anything that says you cannot have it, and they wouldn't count, but there's just some decisions and some treatises and that sort of thing that would make it subject to some question. And I think the Commissioner should be aware of that.
Thank you, Jerry.
That's not a yes-no answer. I mean, I, I earlier felt that it was okay. It's just that I have seen some more recent things which have started to question that. So it's, I guess the point is, is any time you vary from the very, and that's what it boils down to, the Board of Commissioners being a creature statute. Any time you deviate the slightest from exactly what the statute says, it becomes a little bit questionable. My opinion is, that's something that's within your discretion. But again, any time you do something that deviates the slightest from what is exactly written in the code, there are those that are saying you're going beyond your authority.
David, did you want to shed some light on this also?
Well, I actually not shed some light, but ask if some light could be shed. And just to ask Mr. Innis, if a situation came up where, on a particular Thursday, you held a regular meeting at 9:30 and had a very short one and adjourned it, and then had a meeting that evening out somewhere else, it would, I mean, if all we're saying is the challenge is to the requirement that it makes the 50, there's nothing to keep you from having more than 50, is there? And would that then allow the other meeting to take place and to count for all other purposes in terms of that that action was taken properly and things?
That would probably be a possibility.
You know, that would be a possibility, but substantively, how do you split your agenda? And then we're going to be accused probably of trying to manipulate the agenda to have certain things at certain meetings, and people are going to miss out on certain things. You know, it certainly would probably open up some criticism that I couldn't make it to the morning meeting, and you did this in the morning, and why didn't you do it in the evening? I could just see that becoming a real issue. And, you know, decades ago, the Commissioners tried to have two meetings a week, and they ran into the same problem. You know, everybody wanted the item they were interested in on the agenda on their day they could make it. And, you know, it seemed to be more practical to have one meeting, all comprehensive, all of our issues for the week included in the one, so that everybody knew it was going to be dealt with at a specific time and place. And we didn't have that agenda jumping going on. I don't know about the legalities. You have counsel for that. But I will tell you, the rolling road show was well-received. And we saw some new folks, some people that hadn't seen us before. And I think we developed some better understanding with the public, exactly all the complicated and complex issues that the Board of Commissioners actually end up dealing with at the end of the day. But if we're preventing from doing it, we're preventing it from doing it.
Love it. We try to accomplish more transparency and public involvement. We get in trouble for it.
You like that, huh?
Yeah.
Where are we at? We have a first motion and a second?
No, I only have a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Authorize the salary and longevity of pay for Wilfredo Lazanzo, senior bailiff to Judge Elwell, Lorain Municipal Court, effective January 13th, '06, at a bi-weekly rate of $684.62, reflecting the county's 2-fifths shared due to Jose Candilario resigning.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Establish compensation for law directors prosecuting violations for state law in municipal courts in the Ohio Revice Code 1901.34(c) for the year 2006. Lorain, Illyria, and Oberlin received $10,000. North Rangeville and Amherst, $7,500. Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village and Sheffield Lake, $5,000. South Amherst, Wellington, $2,000. And Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermilion, and Lagrange, $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, authorize Local Emergency Planning District to apply for $71,000 to the State Emergency Response Commission for County Hazmat Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Engineer, approve and enter into two engineering services agreements, which have been, have approved by Lorain County Prosecutor, Village of Grafton and Village of Lagrange. Authorize Lorain County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board and modify the tenant list of projects for the Engineers' Bond Fund. One, Village of Grafton, State Route 57, widening from railroad north to Corporation Limits, 6,250 feet. Estimated cost of $3,929,000, and engineers' cost is $437. Village of Lagrange, State Route 301, widening from South Corporation Limit to North Corporation Limit. Estimated construction cost is $2.6 million. Engineering cost is $462,000. Engineer will start with a $20,000 traffic study to determine necessity of the third lane construction. Agreement is for maximum widening entire lane through the village. An initial study may show that only certain areas may be widened. And then modify the tenant list of projects on the bond package to add Colorado Avenue, LOR 6110566, Final Design Phase III, to bond list in the amount of $187,975, and remove South Lake Street, Amherst, $600,000, which can be added back to list if it moves forward in the future. The new tenant of bond schedule, which includes the increase of Grafton, Lagrange's addition, and Colorado Avenue, and the removal of South Lake, will have a total project list of $4,853,713.
Commissioners, I have a slight concern on the $600,000 and the wording that it may be added back to the list. If, if, in fact, we have a mature $4.853 million, I don't see how we're going to squeeze in another $600,000. I got to tell you, they're pushing this program to the very far end of the envelope. We're up to almost $5 million here. And I will tell you here, I would not be comfortable recommending that we exceed that parameter. I mean, that's the very, very far end where we want to be at. This is a great program, but we already have $2 million out bonded to this program. And this additional $5 million will put $7 million liability onto our general obligation bonds. That said, it's very secure debt, and I'm comfortable, because it's backed up by motor vehicle gas taxes, which is backed up by the good obligation of the municipal corporations that are participating. But, you know, you get a certain debt level, and then you've got to watch your bond rating in relation to your debt capacity. Plus, we need to make sure that we have as much capacity as possible when we get ready to start putting infrastructure in to support the quarries project. We initially have to outweigh that, and then we will receive payment back. Like any project we do, we have to front the money. So if a sewer over there is going to cost $15 or $20 million, we're going to have to have construction notes for that much money. So I just want to be cautious with this language. And, you know, if they stay at the 4.8, and they want to come back with the 6, if you ask me for my recommendation, it will be to not to, not to go further.
Not to exceed the $5 million. Correct, sir. That's the cap. So if he gets the projects going, and it lowers the amount of money spent, I'm sure there's contingencies in this, then there might be enough demand to 600 back in, but not to exceed $5 million.
Correct, Commissioner.
So do we need to strike something in this paragraph?
I don't think so. I just wanted to, you know, put that out there, that I think, you know, the comfortability factor is definitely on the ragged edge of $5 million. that I think, you know, the comfortability factor is definitely on the ragged edge of $5 million.
Commissioner, if the Engineers' Office adds it back to the list, we still have final approval, whether or not it gets approved.
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right. So we don't have to change any language?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Recorder, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for document imaging, e-recording and data management system for Lorraine County Recorder. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on February 10th and 17th. Pre-bid meeting at 2:00 p.m. on February 24th in the Recorder's Office, and bid opening is on March 3rd at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I feel a question on it, though. What you brought up, Commissioner, was can we hold this a week possibly to give MRDD? Or does MRDD have to bid it under ORC?
Well, they don't have to bid it. But I think this is a little bit different than what Lori was speaking to, and maybe I see Phil's...
Yeah, Phil, you're still here. Good. Just addressing your...
Thank you.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing thing with the Recorder's Office for quite a while now. We've been kind of dragging our feet, and finally, we've got a deadline and a date. There's a lot of vendors out there. I was only involved with one in the past. I was in the Auditor's Office. And as you guys know, there's only two vendors. They will come out of the woodwork for the Recorder's Office, especially since a lot of them are combining Recorder's data, Auditor's data, GIS, treasures, trying to make a one entire package. The system that we have now, Maximus, does not do Recorders any longer. They are in the court system. So they do not support the current system we have. We've needed this update for quite a while, and we're looking for some help from the Commissioners as far as funding as well, but that's for another date.
Oh, Phil, you let the cat out of the bag.
Yeah, Phil, you don't do that. Don't ask for money till we approve the first part.
Is this the system that you and I have been talking about for about a year or two?
At least, right.
This is the one with the hyperlinks throughout the databases?
Yes.
So you can move seamlessly. Commissioner, I wrote you a letter on this a couple months ago. And I indicated to you that while we had some good databases here with a lot of resources, good depth of material for the public, that it was cumbersome for the public to move seamlessly from one database to another database to retrieve information on a similar issue. You should be able to enter any portal in the county, be looking at information contained in, say, the Auditor's Database, but be able to hyperlink to the Recorder's Office to pick up a supporting document without having to leave the Auditor's Portal and then re-enter through the Recorder's Portal, and then do another quarry through her portal. It just makes it, you know, you're just jumping around a lot. The systems that the Recorder and I have looked at, and they've done most of the research, allows you to have hyperlinks to various common text, common quarry searches and information. So if you wanted to look at the tax record for your house, you can go in there, if you're looking at it, then you could have a link to the documents.
Right. If you pull up a mortgage or a deed, it'd be nice to be able to click on it and see an aerial or see a picture of the home.
Exactly. Then you can click over to the GIS. You can see the local, you can see the most recent aerial photos taken of the home. So you can just continue to move through the documents and move through the county databases very seamlessly. You don't even know you're leaving one database and going into another database. And I think the Recorder is taking the lead on pioneering this.
Yes.
And that would also include records contained at the Record Center could be hyperlinked into this, too. Florida is very progressive in this. I've seen some real progress up in the state of Washington with this. There's some exciting systems. In fact, we were supposed to take a trip, and for various reasons, we didn't take the trip down there
Right.
to actually look at what they were doing down in Florida. It's a very exciting, bold move on the county to make access to public records simple, convenient. And that's what we need to do, because some people get a little bit inhibited because of the complications of moving through the databases. So I would encourage you to support this, and hopefully, the cost will be manageable. When we come back, we can discuss it.
It has been. It's a, we sent out a pre-bid inquiry to quite a few vendors. And it's pretty competitive, considering the size of the number of vendors that are out there that can supply this kind of a thing. The variance was a lot bigger than I thought, but some were very manageable as far as our budget is concerned.
And this will be, you know, an interdepartmental cooperation issue between multiple departments here in the county. So it's something that's going to require everybody to come together with their databases to make it easier so that when you enter, you don't have to continue to leave and come, leave and come. It's just a little bit ridiculous the way it is right now.
Okay. Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye. Mr. Kayla. Mr. Cortez, County Administrator.
Thank you. Commissioners, we know, but I don't think the general public knows that we have a new Budget Director. Shelley is leaving us for, I don't think they're greener pastures, but she's going over to work for Mr. Carney as his business manager. It's a great opportunity for her. And that opening came up rather unexpectedly with a medical retirement over there, and there wasn't much time for Shelley to understand the mistakes she was making leaving us. But she...
We know where you are going to be, though.
Right. But all joking aside, it was a great opportunity for her to understand why she had to do that. Shelley and I have worked together off and on for about 12 years now, and we've had a good relationship since she's been the Budget Director, and I'm very pleased with the things that we've done. But that said, I'd like to introduce Lisa Hobart, who is going to be taking Shelley's place. I've also known Lisa off and on for about 12 years when she worked out in the Auditor's Office for the Order. I don't think that the publics had an opportunity to know that we're in this transition, and I wanted to take this opportunity to do that. Obviously, we got the big hidden cake behind us. We're real stout about how we do things. So we're going to have a little ceremony at the conclusion of the meeting. And then we'll invite the public for cake, and then we have a potluck lunch for Shelley after the public's gone for her coworkers to bid her farewell. But I'd like to turn the mic over to Shelley for just a few words. I know she doesn't want to do that. But come to the podium, Shelley.
Well, thank you so much for this final opportunity. You know I just love getting to this microphone. I'm not as anxious as my, you know, previous director was.
Well, you actually have avoided it quite well since you've been the Budget Director.
I'm sorry?
You've avoided being up there quite well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That was intentional.
Shelley, I just want to tell you just how much I've loved working with you. And we'll be here to support each other, with you out, the county engineers.
Absolutely.
And the great work that you've done for us, and the progress that you made here. And you may just want to tell people how you came to be the Budget Director, because I think it's an interesting trip that you're taking.
How I became the Budget Director?
Well, how you started out in Lorraine County, where you started.
Well, I started off as an account clerk 19 years ago, making $4.50 an hour. Boy, I thought I was, you know, I was in the money. I was a government worker. Little did I know, 19 years later, I just want to take the opportunity to thank this Board and all previous Boards for the opportunities I've been given. And looking forward to going to Mr. Carney's office, and maybe greener pastures, you never know. I'm fortunate enough that Mr. Carney has a good working relationship with this Board, so I'll still be able to haunt the halls and be a pain in your rear end for a while. And welcome Lisa Hobart. I'm sure she'll do a fine job. She's got a lot of experience in the things that we do, along with working in the Auditor's Office. So she'll be a welcome addition here, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Commissioners, I don't have any additional, well, I have one additional thing. I was, yesterday morning, I attended a workers' comp morning briefing. They have CEO briefings that we have to have a certain amount of participation at. We're trying to gain an additional 4% discount in our workers' comp costs. I missed the Team Lorraine County meeting, but I understand we were representing about the two Commissioners there. That 4% equates to $80,000 to $100,000. So when I had to choose which meeting to go to, I thought that the $80,000 to $100,000 sounded a little bit more attractive to us. And so I attended that reference. It was a very, it was a very nice affair. And they had somebody there talking about media relations and how to deal with the media. And it bears a certain amount of attention, how to deal with anything. And the three keys that I took away from there was tell the truth, tell it all, and tell it first. And those are three things that are going to stick with me for quite a while about how we should be taking care of the information we disseminate. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Administrator.
I would like to have an executive session with the Commissioners to update them on two pending litigation matters. And other than that, I would also like to join Mr. Cortez in congratulating Shelley. Shelley has always been one of the accessible people. When we have to find answers, I kind of say, who can I ask that's going to know this? Shelley is always able to explain it to, in ways that even I can understand it. So we're going to miss Shelley.
Commissioners, report.
I wanted to say goodbye to Shelley, and I was very excited when she came on board only because of all the experience she had in the county. But Lisa's the same, same with Lisa. She's been around for a long time, and she knows what's going on. So I was very excited when she decided to come on board with the Commissioners as our Director. So welcome, Lisa, and goodbye, Shelley. I did attend the Team Lorraine County meeting yesterday. And I also said, like, earlier, went out and toured the facilities for MRDD. And it was, they are just, they just have such a great value to our community. They're really doing great things out there. From preschool, the school, the workshops, where these people are keeping busy. They feel valuable, and they're making a little bit of money out there. So I was really pleased to finally have gone out and taken a tour of that facility. And that's all I have.
After you, Commissioner.
Age before beauty.
Okay. After you, Commissioner.
That means you.
Where are you working next week?
I'll go. It's okay. You'll have a lot of things to say.
Thanks, Ted. Thank you. You're a gentleman, anyway. Yeah, I don't know about it.
By the way, it's Groundhog Day, and Punxsutawney Phil said we got six more weeks of winter. I heard that this morning on the radio. Not a whole lot, been a quiet week, but I would like to thank the American Cancer Society. They have asked myself and my wife Wendy to chair the first Relay for Life, an international relay for life in the city of Lorraine for this year, May 12th and 13th. I'm having my first informational meeting today at 5:00. We're bringing some people on board, so I will be keeping everybody updated on our first Relay for Life in the city of Lorraine, and be asking for participation.
That means he expects it. You want money. Is that what you're saying? You need money?
Money in bodies.
Money in bodies.
All right. I'd like to extend congratulations on behalf of the Board to Ron Nabokowski, Clerk of Lorraine County, Court of Common Police, who opened a new office in North Ridgeville. I see Ken Burkhardt's in the audience. Nice job. We were there. And congratulations to the city of North Ridgeville, too. It was nice to see so many people there who are interested in this office now. Bring home the bacon. Tomorrow is the Alliance meeting at the Gould Auditorium at St. Joseph's in Lorraine at 9:00 a.m. And Chris Bauer from the Community Development Department is going to give us a presentation on Lorraine's economic development proposal for development of their area around the hospital, which I've seen before. It's very interesting, and I thought that the Alliance members might be interested in that also. Tonight, the Central Lorraine Community Development Corporation is holding their fifth annual meeting at the Gould Center. And the Commissioners are being a major sponsor of that. So I assume that you will come there after you leave your meeting.
I have two meetings. I'm sorry, Commissioner. But you'll represent the Board.
Lauren and I will represent you.
You guys will represent the Board.
Okay. And finally, I would ask that Mr. Cortez gives a brief comment. Notice the word "brief." We appropriated $290,400 today to the Lorraine County Strike Force. And I think that's a significant investment on the part of the Board of Commissioners. I know Mr. Cortez has worked very hard with all the people involved, but I want it to be known that we've in fact done that.
I understand, Commissioners. I had, the Prosecutor's Office was willing to come over and discuss that, but there's some ongoing operations that they're doing that may be jeopardized in how the funding's being used. I will say that everybody is enthusiastic about the Commissioners' continued support of the program. You're right, it's a significant economic stake that the Commissioners are putting into these communities to try to help deal with the ongoing problems, specifically with drug and the violence that follows the drug community. You have a list somewhere that came over of the various statistics about what they've done. I've been in considerable discussions with Mr. Corey. There'll be more information coming about the progress being made. There's some things that we're better off not knowing with how some of the operations are going. But they are making a difference. It is making a significant impact. And for the second year in a row, this Board has stepped to the plate in a big way to support these efforts in the community. And we have not done that before. And you are very much deserving of the praise for understanding the problem and putting some money into this, and actually putting some effort into it where the rubber meets the road. It's easy to talk about. It's hard to get the money out there and finance it and get it done. And you deserve nothing but praise for that. And I hope that suffices, Commissioner, for you said "brief." One last thing, though. You're going to be out of St. Joe's tomorrow, and as you know, I'm the Chairman and the Board of the South Shore Community Development Corporation. I will not be there. I have depositions tomorrow, and I also have to be in federal court representing this Board in both issues. So unfortunately, I'm so enthusiastic that you have supported the South Shore Community Development Department cooperation by coming out to St. Joe's. I spoke with you about bringing the Alliance out there, but I will not be at that meeting, and I apologize. But again, my priorities are correct and where I need to be. But thank you for doing that.
Keep bringing the money home.
And thank you, Lori. I know you're involved with the community development, the community...
Alliance.
Alliance, too. And we really need the help to bring some attention to St. Joe's and the South Shore Community Development Corporation out there. And thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. That's all, Teresa.
Correspondents?
I will be reading the wave.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. I'd like to make two comments. I assume that report that you've seen on the strike force is available to the public.
I will check with Mr. Corey to see if there's any information that cannot be made available. And if he doesn't have any problem with that, I will not have a problem releasing that to you.
Thank you. The second thing I'd like to say, I'm glad to hear of Mr. Ennis's comments and concerns about whether you can hold a public meeting and make decisions and deal with substantive issues elsewhere. I have not seen those things that he's referring to, and I'm going to look into that myself. But I would like to suggest that you could consider listening sessions around the county at various times where you don't have an agenda where you make substantive decisions, county at various times where you don't have an agenda where you make substantive decisions, but you do listen to the concerns of the public. Will make them feel better, it'll make you feel better, or make you more effective to hear what they have to say.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the Commissioners on behalf of Ron Nabokowski, Clerk of Lorraine County Court of Common Police, for their support in opening our office for auto titles and passports in the North Ridgeville, Ohio. What we are trying to do with that office is capture some of the business that is currently going to the Kahog County, which is Lorraine County, people that are dealing with the renewals of their titles and their passports. So we hope that it will be a success and with your effort, I'm sure it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies, I wasn't able to attend your grand opening because I had a solid waste Policy Committee meeting at the same time. But as Betty said, bring home the bacon.
Okay.
And want to make sure that you're bringing in some revenue so you can pay back all the money we're expending to repair that.
Earned, Ted. Thank you.
Anyone else? I move that we go into executive session.
I'll second. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
So please stop by our dog kennel. We have several dogs available for adoption, looking for a good home. And our batting record is, Jack? 1,000. Thank you very much. I gotta give this microphone back to Cordes.
No, you don't.
No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she's, gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention. And she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look. So it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now. So.
Like when I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and, and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But I, we, we both lived and I was fine afterwards.
One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again, just giving this dog, who, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a, a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's, he's not that much trouble because he, he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him. So I didn't really have to go through the, the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and, and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered. And that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play and, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually. He was, he had, they had his picture on the internet. And so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem. You know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and, and I'm, I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there and they all need good homes. And if, if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a, and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life and will love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow Commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Haddaway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners. I believe Betty has our, our dog today.
I have a dog.
The dog from the movie Mask.
Oh, thank you. Good morning.
Elizabeth didn't give me a dog biscuit this morning.
Oh, here we go. We just want to inspect the place a little bit.
Good morning. This week's featured pet at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel is a stray male, oh, a Jack Russell mix, about two years old. He is in cage 30 and is eligible for adoption. Look. He's eligible for adoption on Friday, February 3rd. Now look what a nice pet he'd take. I make, I bet a good walking buddy too. Yeah. Can you bark? Woof! He says, who is this crazy woman? Good puppy. Oh, yes.
I think he's gonna shake hands.
Oh, you're gonna shake?
They jump good. High jumpers.
He wants to go home with you.
Yeah, I know. Elizabeth didn't give me a treat this morning. No treat. Okay? So please stop by our dog kennel. We have several dogs available for adoption, looking for a good home. And our batting record is, Jack? 1,000. Thank you very much. I gotta give this microphone back to Cordes.
Okay, for our quote for the day, it's kind of a funny one. Don't toss away the aluminum foil on your TV dinner. You may be throwing away the best part. Okay, Teresa.
First thing, we have an annexation. It's the decision on the 226.13 acres from Kahog Township to the City of Illyria. Attorney James Taylor is the agent.
Well, we've been discussing this annexation for quite some time, and I know the City of Illyria and the Townships have been in negotiations and trying to talk this out. Do we have an update on that?
Yes, Commissioner. We have, I believe, made some substantial progress. There's still a ways to go and it has not been concluded. It is my understanding that the Township and the city are willing to extend the time. And I think if Mr. Taylor is the developers, or your clients.
Right, we've agreed to just one last 30-day extension. We have three meetings scheduled for when we can give them the benefit of adoption. We will reschedule approximately 45 minutes from now. We have more than that scheduled.
So I can make a motion to extend this for 30 days?
Again, what, because I don't think we caught that on the record, is the petitioners are willing to go for about a 30-day extension, but this is absolutely the last one. And if it's not wrapped up by then...
So you better get it together, basically, huh?
That's correct.
Okay. I would make that motion.
Do we want to have a time?
March 2nd, which would be the 27th day, because 30th would be actually Saturday, so if that's okay with all parties.
That would allow them to do their three February meetings, that'd be fine.
March 2nd.
Mr. Schrader's not here today, but I've talked to him on the phone. He's agreed that that was fine with him. Mr. White was going to be able to concur for the Township.
Do I have a second?
Yes. Did you want to stipulate a time, or you don't care?
We can do the first thing, 9:30.
Okay, fine. I'll second.
March 2nd?
March 2nd, 9:30.
Thank you.
So we have a 30 days?
Actually, 27.
Jim, can you give us an update on those negotiations? I've been, you've been quite involved with that.
Would you like to take a roll call first on this motion, though?
No. No? I want to hear first. Okay.
The, it's, thank you for the opportunity. I think that right before, excuse me, shortly after the holidays, we heard that there didn't seem to be, there was a feeling that there wasn't the ability to come together on a jet by one of the parties. And that was a little bit difficult because we were still having discussions and we have intensified our meetings since then. And, and I'm pleased to tell the Board that we are very, very close to, I believe, reaching an agreement that the party, both parties may find acceptable. Greatly encouraged, there's been a lot of movement, a lot of original thinking on how to bring this jet together. We're out of the mainstream and we're, we're into some, some new areas that, that may set a trend for, for future jets on, on how to share and distribute funds and sharing the resources. And I've seen a spirit decor and cooperation in the last few meetings that we didn't have before. And, and the parties are working very, very well together. And I'm thinking that they're, I know they're going to get an agreement. I'm, I'm just, don't know. The 30 days is pretty short, but that just gives us a more challenging goal to meet. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring you back, something that everybody finds agreeable within that timeframe. My hat's off to Kahog Township and the City of Illyria for, for making the progress they have. I think that three months ago, you probably, nobody would have taken a bet that they were ever going to be able to come together and reach an agreement. So significant progress is being made. And the petitioners, I'm sorry, I apologize for their, for their patience and allowing us to continue with this process, because obviously, without their patience, we may not have had the same cooperative attitude at the table.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to say, especially the petitioners, I want to thank you for waiting this process out, because I think it portends a lot of good things for Lorraine County in general. And I want to publicly thank Mr. Cordes for his leadership in bringing these parties together. I think this is the better way for us to go. And so I want to publicly thank you also for allowing us to go through this process.
Thank you very much.
And Jerry Ennis. I'm sorry, while we're thanking everybody. Jerry's been doing this for so long that we just take him for granted, and I apologize for that.
Now you can take your phone.
Take your roll.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under resolutions, number one?
Mr. Albert would like to say something.
Oh, come on up, Mr. Albert. Good morning.
Larnie Albert, 155 Albert Drive, Grafton. Just wanted to put a little bit of light on this situation here, being it's historically the longest wait for an annexation in Lorraine County history. I started this six years ago when Mike Keys was still mayor and Bill Grace is going into his sixth year as mayor. Purchased this land to develop at a highlight time when building industry was booming. Came in for annexation. The, Mrs. Blair was the only one left out of the three Commissioners at the time. This thing was set aside for 90 days, along with a couple other annexations. I went along with that. I withdrew it, trying to work something out with the trustees and with the City of Illyria to get sewers. It's been ongoing. And sometime has passed and things have kind of floated away. You talk to somebody today and tomorrow they forget you talked to them. A year ago, we came in for this annexation, again. We've been here, I don't know how many times. We've given extension after extension after extension. It's time to act. We're going to go along with this 30-day situation, but we're not going to extend any further. If it takes other means to get this thing done, we're going to have to do that. But we can't wait no longer. I'm no kid no more. Mr. Shave's no kid no more. And we'd like to see this before we die. So I want to thank you for your time. Just wanted to refresh your memory as to how long we've been waiting for this thing, how patient we've been. And in 30 days, if these guys don't cut her, we're going to be back here and it's not going to be any extensions, okay? Thank you for your time.
You're still a kid, Larnie.
Very patient kid.
I think, I think we feel the heat.
That's all for you.
I understand.
John and Palley Services, Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
A second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Aye. A, a second, I'm sorry. I'll vote aye after I seconded.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
I have a question. I, I see Phil's in the audience... I have a question. I, I see Phil's in the audience. I tried to get ahold of Judy yesterday regarding one of the requisitions. You guys are having some documents copied. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not sure which one it was. Are they talking about all the records in the basement?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just gonna get those scanned.
That was that lodge one, that, that program for the, you wanna go out for the RFPs and so forth?
No, that's separate.
Okay.
This is just all the stuff, the basement has a bunch of archived books covered up with maintenance equipment, tables, ladders, things like that. It's hard to get at for the customers. So we're just gonna take them one at a time and get them scanned.
How technical is that scanning process, because I toured...
It's not, just slide it in.
Is it? Because I toured...
The only problem is, you gotta get both sides, so you gotta do double the work. It's a little time-consuming, and we know how many thousands of books are down there, and how old they are, and how delicate the pages are by now. So I believe that's what she's talking about, otherwise. Just the other thing that's on the agenda for the new system is the only thing I was aware of.
I don't think so either. Can I see those?
Yeah, there's nothing on them.
No, I had it on my desk, and I don't remember which one it was. Maybe it was under Bills.
Yeah, what is that? There was something with the recording.
The only reason that I'm asking, Phil, is I went, I had the opportunity to go out to Murray Ridge this week and tour their facility, and one of the things that they're doing now is scanning documents, and it's very confidential, and I just wondered if Judy was aware that they did that there, and gave them the opportunity to see if they can take care of this for you.
That's a thought. I was thinking more along the lines of the Record Center and then storing everything over there, but if Murray Ridge is available, I don't want to put any thoughts in anybody's heads, but that's not a bad idea.
Can you have her check into that?
Will do.
To see how high, you know, I mean, it may be more technical than what they can do, but if it's just scanning documents, that's, I think that's something that they can handle.
Sure.
Thank you.
There was a, there was something. It's not here. I saw it.
I mean, we're going out for our...
Number 16 you bought?
No, we're going out for RFPs on the agenda.
It was RFPs.
Oh, that's what it was, yes. You're right.
I was...
I knew it was somewhere.
Yeah, I was trying to get your attention. It was like, I don't know, 16. Thank you.
Okay.
It was the RFPs for the larger project. That's different than...
Exactly. And we do have an extra week on that, because it's not due to advertise until February 10th.
Well, we can speak tomorrow when we get to that.
Okay.
We've been working in conjunction with, with Judy and Phil, with the Record Center, and we got, we got a good cooperative effort going on a lot of stuff.
Yes.
With, with the records, so we're getting a lot done there, but Phil was being kind about the way the condition of the records are in the basement. We stuck them down there about, I want to say about eight, nine years ago, and the conditions have just deteriorated rapidly, and they've been really struggling trying to get all those records out. It's almost embarrassing when somebody's looking for something. We have to send them down to all the garbage and, yeah, over into the corner, so it's much needed. But the MRDD thing, that may help for us, too, with the Record Center.
Were you aware that they did that now? That's a new thing.
I didn't know they were doing the scanning, but I, I had the, the wonderful opportunity to work for an MRDD, and we ran workshops when I was working there, and I know that they do have, some of the consumers go out and have job coaches and work in various tasks. I hadn't thought about the, the scanning of the documents, which could be an exciting partnership for us. And we do have some partnerships with them now for cleaning services and things in some of our buildings out on Middle Ridge, so we can take a look into that.
Okay. Sorry to go off track here a little bit, but...
Ms. Skakowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated, sorry, from place within jurisdiction with Commissioners.
Commissioners, I would like to request an executive session. There's one or two new hires I want to talk to you about. I also want to bring you up to speed on where we are on some personnel litigation, and I don't believe it'll be, be too long, and I want to talk to you about getting ready for our upcoming round of labor negotiations. There's been a filing by the unions to begin the process, and it'll be a new process to Lori, you, and Ted, and I will spend some time talking about that, what we need to do, and those are all permissible subjects under the sunshine law.
Authorized the changing of the filing from commissioners' meeting dates and times due to other obligations. Instead of Thursday, March 9th, we'll do Tuesday, March 7th at 9:30. Instead of April 13th, we'll go Wednesday, April 12th at 9:30, and also, instead of November 9th, we'll go Wednesday, November 8th at 9:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is all NOAACA's meeting and...
There's two NOAACA meetings, yes.
Any desire to have one of those be a night meeting?
I would love to do that.
I can't hear you.
I said, "I would love to have a night meeting." Jim asked the question, "We'd like to have a night meeting." That'd be a great idea. More participation from the public. I still think we ought to take us on the road.
You know, we were very successful and well-received when we did that, but it had come to our attention that we're required to have 50 meetings
Here.
in the seat, and, and I'm not even sure that we ever got over the issue of whether any meetings that we hold outside the seat would survive a judicial review. I don't know if Mr. Ennis wants to speak to that. It's probably a good piece of information for our friends that routinely visit our meetings, because they have also visited us on the road, too. Jerry, do you?
We still can't hear you, Mr. Cordez.
You know, I think you're better off if you can't hear him. Sorry.
I was particularly interested in the requirement and how that was going to be done.
I'm sorry. I was just being facetious.
Commissioner Blair will recall, and perhaps some of the people in the audience will recall, that two, two, three years ago, I don't exactly remember when, we, we held some of our commissioner meetings in various parts of the areas around the county. Subsequent to that, in some research that I have been doing, I came across some opinions and some court decisions that questioned whether those would count toward our regular meetings, and whether we, in fact, can hold regular meetings outside of this building. So because of that, I have suggested to the Commissioners, they need to conduct the requisite number of meetings.
Fifty?
Yes.
Fifty. Fifty, to be safe here in this building. I've not found anything that says you cannot have it, and they wouldn't count, but there's just some decisions and some treatises and that sort of thing that would make it subject to some question, and I, I think the Commissioner should be aware of that.
Thank you, Jerry.
That's not a yes-no answer. Quite, I mean, I, I earlier felt that it was okay. It's just that I have seen some more recent things which have started to question that, so it's, I guess the point is, is anytime you vary from the very, and that's what it boils down to, the Board of Commissioners being a creature statute, anytime you deviate the slightest from exactly what the statute says, it becomes a little bit questionable. My opinion is, that's something that's within your discretion, but again, anytime you do something that deviates the slightest from what is exactly written in the code, there are those that are saying you're going beyond your authority.
David, did you want to shed some light on this also?
Well, I actually not shed some light, but ask if some light could be shed, and just to ask Mr. Ennis, if a situation came up where on a particular Thursday, you held a regular meeting at 9:30 and had a very short one and adjourned it, and then had a meeting that evening out somewhere else, it would, I mean, if, if all were saying is the challenge is to the requirement that it makes the 50, there's nothing to keep you from having more than 50, is there? And would that then allow the other meeting to, to take place and to count for all other purposes in terms of that that action was taken properly and things?
That, that would probably be a possibility.
You know, that would be a possibility, but substantively, how do you split your agenda, and then we're gonna be accused probably of trying to manipulate the agenda to have certain things at certain meetings, and people are gonna miss out on certain things. You know, it's, it certainly would probably open up some criticism that I couldn't make it to the morning meeting, and you did this in the morning, and why didn't you do it in the evening? I could just see that becoming a real issue, and, you know, decades ago, the Commissioners tried to have two meetings a week, and they ran into the same problem. You know, everybody wanted the item they were interested in on the agenda. On their day, they could make it, and, you know, it seemed to be more practical to have one meeting all comprehensive, all, all of our issues for the week included in the one, so that everybody knew it was gonna be dealt with at a specific time and place, and we didn't have that agenda jumping going on. I, I don't know about the legalities. You have counsel for that, but I will tell you, the, the rolling road show was well-received, and
Yeah.
we, we saw some new folks, some people that hadn't seen us before, and I think we developed some better understanding with the public, exactly all the complicated and complex issues that the Board of Commissioners actually end up dealing with at the end of the day. But if we're prevented from doing it, we're prevented from doing it.
Love, we try to accomplish more transparency and public involvement. We get in trouble for it.
You like that, huh?
Yeah.
Where are we at? We have a first, a motion and a second?
No, I only have a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Aye.
Authorized the salary and longevity pay for Wilfredo Lazanzo, senior bailiff to Judge Elwell, Lorraine Municipal Court, effective January 13th, '06, at a biweekly rate of $684.62 reflecting the county's two-fifth share due to Jose Candelario resigning.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Established compensation for law directors prosecuting violations for state law in municipal courts in the Ohio Revice Code 1901.34C for the year 2006. Lorraine, Alaria, and Oberlin received $10,000. North Ridgeville and Amherst, 7,500; Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village and Sheffield Lake, 5,000; South Amherst, Wellington, 2,000; and Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermillion, and La Grange, 1,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, authorize local emergency planning district to apply for $71,000 to the State Emergency Response Commission for County Hazmat Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Engineer, approve and enter into two engineering services agreements which have been, have approved by Lorraine County Prosecutor, Village of Grafton and Village of La Grange. Authorize Lorraine County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board and modify the tentative list of projects for the Engineers' Bond Fund. One, Village of Grafton, State Route 57, widening from railroad north to corporation limit 6,250 feet, estimated cost of $3,929,000, and engineers' cost is $437. Village of La Grange, State Route 301, widening from South Corporation Limit to North Corporation Limit, estimated construction cost is $2.6 million, engineering cost is $462,000. Engineer will start with a $20,000 traffic study to determine necessity of the third lane construction. Agreement is for maximum widening entire lane through the village. An initial study may show that only certain areas may be widened, and then modify the tentative list of projects on the bond package to add Colorado Avenue, LOR 6110566, final design phase three, to bond list in the amount of $187,975, and remove South Lake Street, Amherst, $600,000, which can be added back to list if it moves forward in the future. The new tentative bond schedule, which includes the increase of Grafton, La Grange's addition, and Colorado Avenue, and the removal of South Lake, will have a total project list of $4,853,713.
Commissioners, I have a, a slight concern on the $600,000 and the wording that it may be added back to the list. If, if in fact, we have a mature $4.853 million, I don't see how we're gonna squeeze in another $600,000. I gotta tell you, they're pushing this program to the very far end of the envelope. We're up to almost $5 million here, and I will tell you here, I would not be comfortable recommending that we exceed that parameter. I mean, that's the very, very far end where we want to be at. This is a great program, but we already have $2 million out bonded to this program, and this additional $5 million will put $7 million liability onto our general obligation bonds. That said, it's very secure debt, and I'm comfortable because it's backed up by motor vehicle gas taxes, which is backed up by the good obligation of the municipal corporations that are participating, but, you know, you get a certain debt level, and then you gotta watch your, your bond rating in relation to your debt capacity, plus we need to make sure that we have as much capacity as possible when we get ready to start supporting, putting infrastructure in to support the quarries project. We initially have to outweigh that, and then we will receive payment back. Like any project we do, we have to front the money, so if a sewer over there is gonna cost 15 or 20 million dollars, we're, we're gonna have to have construction notes for that much money, so I just want to be cautious with this language, and, you know, if they stay at the 4.8, and they want to come back with the 6, if you ask me for my recommendation, it will be to not to, not to go further.
Not to exceed the $5 million.
Correct, sir.
That's the cap, so if he gets the projects going, and it lowers the amount of money spent, because I'm sure there's contingencies in this, then there might be enough demand to 600 back in, but not to exceed $5 million.
Correct, Commissioner.
So do we need to strike something in this paragraph?
I, I don't think so. I, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there, that I think, you know, the comfortability factor is, is definitely on, on the ragged edge at $5 million.
Commissioner, if the Engineers' Office adds it back to the list, we still have final approval, whether or not it gets approved.
Yes, you do.
Okay, all right, so we don't have to change any language.
No.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Aye.
Under the Recorder, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for document imaging, e-recording, and data management system for Lorraine County Recorder. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on February 10th and 17th, pre-bid meeting at 2:00 p.m. on February 24th in the Recorder's office, and bid opening is on March 3rd at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I had a question on it, though, which you brought up, Commissioner, was, can we hold this a week possibly to give MRDD, or does MRDD have to bid it under ORC?
Well, they don't have to bid it, but I think this is a little bit different than, than what Lori was speaking to, and maybe I see Phil's...
Yeah, Phil, you're still here, good. Just addressing your...
Thank you.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing thing with the Recorder's Office for quite a while now. We've been kind of dragging our feet, and finally, we've got a deadline and a date. There's a lot of vendors out there. I was only involved with one in the past. I was in the Auditor's Office, and as you guys know, there's only two vendors. They will come out of the woodwork for the Recorder's Office, especially since a lot of them are combining Recorder's data, Auditor's data, GIS, treasures, trying to make a one entire package. The system that we have now, Maximus, does not do Recorders any longer. They are in the court system, so they do not support the current system we have. We, we've needed this update for quite a while, and we're looking for some help from the Commissioners as far as funding as well, but that's for another date.
Oh, Phil, you let the cat out of the bag.
Yeah, Phil, you don't do that. Don't ask for money that we approved the first part.
Is this the system that you and I have been talking about for about a year or two?
At least, right.
This is the one with the hyperlinks throughout the databases, so you can move seamlessly? Commissioner, I wrote you a letter on this a couple months ago, and I indicated to you that while we had some good databases here with a lot of resources, good depth of material for the public, that it was cumbersome for the public to move seamlessly from one database to another database to retrieve information on a, on a similar issue. You should be able to enter any portal in the county, be looking at information contained in, say, the Auditor's Database, but be able to hyperlink to the Recorder's Office to pick up the supporting document without having to leave the Auditor's Portal and then re-enter through the Recorder's Portal, and then do another quarry through her portal, and just makes it, you know, you're just jumping around a lot, and the systems that the Recorder and, and I have looked at, and they've, they've done most of the research, allows you to have hyperlinks to various common text, common quarry searches and, and information. So if you wanted to look at the tax record for your house, you can go in there. If you're looking at it, then you could have a link to the documents.
Right, if you pull up...